Good evening and welcome to the January 13th meeting of the Berlin zoning board of appeals. Please be advised that the image and voice of participants and attendees of this meeting and hearings may be recorded for the record. Let me have the board introduce themselves. I'm Lynn Ryan, Chair of the Board. Jim?
Jim Royer here.
He's Vice Chair. Denny?
Dennis, yeah.
Okay, Pat?
Pat Jackson here.
And I'm eliminating Ginny. Keith, you is is here, right?
Here.
Okay, and we're not going to have Susanna. Leanne is our is clerk for the
Berlin News Board's here.
Yeah, there we go. And Amy is our counsel. Okay, the first order of business is the Capes of Berlin, so I'll open the continuation of the hearing for the Capes of Berlin.
Madam Chairman, can I have a question?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Actually, you are usually pretty good at this, and I'd like you to mention any questions you have about the new proposal.
Well, I just received the homeowners association declaration of trust. It, we asked for documents for two weeks ahead of time, and this came like maybe three days ago. I have not had a chance to peruse it, and I've already seen several questions that I have. If we have discussion on it tonight, is it possible that we extend the vote on it till the time that we do? I don't know how everybody else has had a chance to look at it, but literally, I just received it. Leanne was very helpful and got it to me, but it was only three days out, not two weeks.
No, I received mine on Monday. I was able to go through it briefly. I had a lot of questions, and some of the stuff that was in the first one is now missing in this.
Yes. So again, I don't know how far the discussion would go, but I would at least vote on it extended until next meeting. Ms. Lynn, you gonna sneeze? Sorry.
Lynn, your microphone's muted. You okay, Lynn?
I hope it's not COVID. Who's representing the Capes of Berlin this evening?
We have a bunch of people that are in attendance. Whoever's representing, can you guys raise your hand, please? So Paul Harberty, Seth Donahue, Mark Rhodes, would you like me to promote them?
Yes, please.
I'd also like to make sure that other people have a chance to see it, like some of the actual homeowners around the area. I'm sure they didn't get a chance yet.
Okay, Mr. Rhodes, Mr. Harberty, Mr. Donahue, do any of you wish to explain or give a synopsis of the changes that you've made?
Madam Chair, this is Attorney Paul Harberty. First, please let me apologize for the lateness of when these were submitted. I was aware that they would due two weeks in advance, and we were working on them, but then I wound up in the hospital for a couple of days with a minor health scare. So unfortunately, I was not able to get them out when I intended to. These revised declaration of trust, you know, is intended to address the issues and concerns that had been raised by the board previously. And I think that they do a very good job of doing exactly that. They're far more comprehensive than what had been previously submitted. That being said, I'm quite interested to hear from the members who are indicating that there were provisions omitted from the prior draft, because certainly happy to restore those provisions. Was not intended to take anything out that that was thought to have been necessary. Happy to make changes to reintroduce those provisions.
Lynn, you're muted again.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Harberty, given that the folks have only had these for a couple of days in some instances, could you go through and articulate those changes that you've made?
Well, it was it was really more so than just making changes. It was a completely new draft. Put it into a homeowners association declaration of trust. Added, you know, the provisions that the board had indicated that they wanted to see with regards to dispute resolution, cross referencing of the comprehensive permits, language with regards to the testing of the septic systems. All of that has been included in this draft.
And what have you done?
To do is act as close to the declaration of trust for condominium development as it can.
One concern that I know I had, and I believe others shared, was that protection for the affordable units.
That's gone completely, right?
And how we could prevent the HOA in the future from voting to change the initial desires of the board for there to be a distribution that would give some alleviation to the affordable. Can you explain to us how you did that or what you did?
Madam Chair, if I may, just to make this go a little bit quicker, we received this by an email. I think it might have been on Saturday. I didn't get it until Monday morning. And so it's Wednesday, so it has been only, you know, for me at least, it's only been two days that I've that I've been able to, you know, really look at this. I have big picture items that I thought maybe if I could run through those, Attorney Harberty would then have a direction to go back and revise the document. And so, and then what I could do is, you know, with time, with a little bit of time, and I will say that, you know, I did suggest that we not continue to January and continue to February, because I didn't think there was enough time with the holidays. But the applicant wanted to press forward. And clearly, there's just not enough time. I've been able to make, you know, handwritten changes and questions, but I haven't gone through this, you know, with track changes to be able to really, you know, fix things and and suggest things. But, you know, you know, just on the first page, they're calling this, the second paragraph, they're calling this a definitive plan. I don't know why they're not calling it a comprehensive permit plan. It's technically not a definitive plan. That's confusing. That means that it was created by subdivision control, which technically it wasn't. It was, I get it. I get that the board stands in the shoes of the planning board. But I think that it's important to reference the comprehensive permit as much as we possibly can. I don't understand the name, Capes of Berlin easement homeowners association trust. I don't know why that word easement is in there. I'm not sure that I I fully agree that septic testing is fully involved in this. So, you know, the general purposes under under page two, the second 2.1, general purposes, it says the vegetated buffer access creating utilities, and then it says private way. I'm not sure. It doesn't say anything about the testing, the septic testing. I think that there needs to be more detail with regard to the vegetative buffer. So then we get to page four, and page four is where the first time it says that, and at least the first time that I, with my quick review of this, the first time that it says shall be shared equally by the owners. Now, it was my understanding that the ZBA wanted to see the affordable owners be, you know, paying 80%, which is the affordable, I guess, amount. And so 70?
I believe that's what it is. I can check the
Sorry, I, in my notes, I had 80. And that, whatever that percent is, somehow, you know, cross referencing this with with
Well, original, the original document they gave us spoke in one place about 70 and spoke in another place about 50.
Right.
Historically, or at least currently, the board has been using 70%.
Okay.
The 80% may be because of the economic standing of the individuals that are eligible. You know, 80% of them mean income or median income.
Yeah.
But
I mean, and that might be where where that's coming from, but we need to get a formula from the applicant as to how this is going to be allocated. So, you know, I I can, where's my note? I mean, I can show you that I did make an attempt to, I did make an attempt to try and allocate by dividing the 12s, and I couldn't do it. So, but I am math challenged. So I'm sure that, you know, the applicant can figure this out, but we need to have a proper allocation. It needs to be within this document. And so we don't run into, you know, a situation that we've run into before. And that I thought was very, very clear. You know, the other things is that, you know, it doesn't, I don't see anywhere under in page five. My notes clearly state that a an affordable owner was to be a trustee, and I don't see that anywhere there. With regard to to the beneficial interest on page seven, first of all, it says pursuant to section 2.2 hereof. It says something about additional lots being added, but 2.2 has to do with the buffer zone. So I think that might be just a wrong reference. But this is where, if I had a chance to get into the document, do track changes, I could send it back to Attorney Harberty. He could address those changes, and then we could come to this board with not a lot of issues. But right now, you know, we've got a mess, I think, because of of my comments. My comments are a mess. I'm not saying that the document is necessarily a mess. But again, you know, we have in on page nine, section 5.2, we have the authority to assess, but we have nothing about the septic inspections, which is a major concern of this board. And again, you know, the trustee shall have the authority to levy and enforce, and I think that's a fabulous and a great provision. We don't want to get rid of that. But I think we need to either cross reference or somehow mention that the that the affordables are only responsible for 80%. So I don't want a trustee in 12 years, you know, going after an affordable because they didn't pay the 100% of of something when they only were supposed to pay 80%.
I'd like you to use 70% only because
70, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right. You're right. And then with regard to the, on page 11, they reference very, very important things about the comprehensive permit, which I appreciate, and I think are great. But again, we don't have the septic inspections in there. And if we do, I missed it in my haste. I apologize for that. And then page 13, we have the termination of the trust, where it can be done by the approval of the board. And that that has to be noted, that that would be a substantial modification that needs a public hearing that, you know, a substantial modification of the comprehensive permit pursuant to 760, you know, CMR 56. And so that would need a public hearing and a majority vote of the board. Because again, we don't want to mess around with, you know, changes without everybody knowing about the changes. And then again, in just in the dispute, you know, it says it's going to be borne by the parties equally. And I think we just need to make sure that the affordables are only charged 70%. But so, so, you know, that's where my extremely, extremely cursory review came out. And I just wanted to point that out just so that the applicant would be aware of the fact that, you know, we're not ready, that this isn't ready.
No.
So
Thank you so much for your quick overview. Pat, did you want to say something?
Just one more quick thing, Amy. On the dispute resolutions on the mediation, it says that either party may elect. Does that mean they also don't have to deal with it?
Where is may elect? Can you give me a second?
Either party may elect. It's under article, the disputal
Yep.
Page 919192, two down there, either party may elect. Would that imply that you don't have to do it either?
Well, if following parties agree that no resolution. Yeah, actually. At first, I thought, you know what, Pat, when I first read it, I thought it meant that either party may elect to go to REBA, or they could go somewhere else.
But even if they went to REBA, it's not binding.
Right now, it says, you're right. The way it's written is is confusing.
Just to clarify on that, you can't require parties to mediate. So the way this is drafted, it actually, if a party is unwilling to mediate, then it directs them to arbitration.
I understand that, but it still is not binding to anything in a dispute resolution. Is that my understanding?
Well, it's an arbitration that's binding.
Yeah, if we just put either party may elect mediation by, I don't know if we wanted, why do we want to pigeonhole us into REBA? But anyway, may elect mediation. If not, the parties will go to arbitration.
Okay, so that whole area has to be run done also. Okay.
Well, let me get a feeling for how the board feels. Would it be wise for us to have Amy work with Paul and resolve some of these issues before we get involved in going over it?
I thought that was the first idea anyway.
I I agree with Pat. You know, I don't I don't think there's anything wrong with, you know, individual members sending comments to Leanne, who could then forward them along to me. So I could maybe gather a comprehensive document with changes that I could send to Paul, and then Paul and I, or I'm sorry, Attorney Harberty, and I could discuss prior to the next meeting.
So Amy, how much time do would we have to look over it? So I have to, within two weeks, get it to you? So you have? Okay.
Yeah. So if you get it to me in two weeks, and then Paul and I, or Attorney Harberty and I have two weeks.
Okay.
So
Well, how about if we do one week and then two weeks for the two of you? So at least it would be a week. We could get it in advance.
Oh, yeah, that's right. You guys should. Yes, you're right. So what is your February meeting?
The second Wednesday, which is
The 10th?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay.
Can I just add, I do want, I want to thank Attorney Harberty for adding the dispute resolution, because that was a big concern of mine. So I do want to make sure he knows that I appreciate it. And I also feel that going this method, the other questions I have will will be taken care of. So I'm not even going to bring up all the questions that I had.
Amy, would you also take a look at which units are listed as the affordable units that may have pipes that go on forever?
Okay.
In other words, some of them have lengthy behind the yards of a whole bunch of people, and that would be an expense for an affordable unit.
Okay, you're right.
Hey, Madam Chair, I'm just going to bring to your attention that Ginny is now with us.
The plan that he submitted, yeah.
And her name's misspelled. I don't know.
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay, does anyone want to bring up anything, Mr. Harberty? What are your feelings on this?
I think that what Attorney Questle has proposed makes perfect sense, and I'm happy to work with her on this.
Was there some misunderstanding from the last meeting?
No, there was no misunderstanding in terms of the the timing.
No, no. Well, in terms of the timing and in terms of what the board was asking you to do.
Again, I think that we have in in great detail covered much of what the board had requested. I think that some of what Attorney get back to me on is going to be further detail, you know, beyond sort of the broad strokes. Some of it is going to be responses, you know, indicating that whatever we addressed wasn't addressed well enough, and that she wants to see something more substantive.
Can I add a suggestion? Sorry. We have the DBA letter to Rebecca McDonald of Whitney Estates dated March 24th, 2020. And that's filed at the registry of deeds. I think that's a good one to reference.
I can't hear you, Susanna.
Really? Okay. Can you hear me better now?
Actually, Sue, your microphone, for some reason, gets loud and then quiet back and forth. It feels like there's some kind of auto cleaning thing on.
I don't know.
See if there's a
Well, continue, Susanna, and we'll try to. You can, you can scream, and we won't complain.
All right, just stop me if you if you're not hearing me.
You're back again.
Okay. The letter dated March 24th, 2020 to Rebecca McDonald of Whitney Estates details one way of figuring out the 70% and the square footage and the fees. That's a good reference for Attorney Harberty to look at. And then also Whitney Estates condominium amendment to the declaration of trust also talks about the board of trustees. Very detailed, and I think that'll help add more details. For example, the number of trustees, which is not even covered in the current draft that I read. So I just want to offer those.
Susanna, would you be able to forward those documents to Leanne, and then she can get them to me, and I can get them to Paul, and we can work off of those?
Susanna, could I just verify that the, is this the letter that was sent to Becky McDonald or from Becky McDonald?
It's to. Both of these items are filed at the registry of deeds. I just went on and downloaded them because I knew they had the information that we were looking for. So I can certainly forward those to you.
Okay, why don't you forward them to Leanne?
Will do.
And she can forward them to to Amy. The only reason I ask you, Mr. Harberty, if you have, if you, if there was a misunderstanding is because I think our expectations were higher for what you were going to bring to us. And if you have any questions of us now, it would be good for you to bring them forward.
No, I don't have any questions right now. I've taken notes of everything that Attorney Questle has mentioned so far, as well as the board members. And obviously, once I get annotated response from Attorney Questle, we will make changes and address all of the concerns.
Are you comfortable doing that, Amy?
I am comfortable doing that. Could I get from the applicant at this time? Could I get the afford, could they let me know what the affordable lots are, what numbers they are? On the plan, I have 1A, 2A, 3A, 4A.
We'll get you that, Amy.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair, Dennis Minich is in the audience and has his hand raised.
Okay, would you promote him, please?
Dennis, you're allowed to speak now. You have to turn on your mic.
Hello. Thank you for listening. I had sent a, an email to the ZBA, and I just wondered if you received my email? And it had some questions on it around this document. Did you receive my email?
We did, but if, but if you would like to bring your questions to Mr. Donahue, this would be the time for you to do it.
Okay, just forgive me for my lack of knowledge of the actual what's legal and what isn't. But I've never heard of Capes of Berlin easement homeowners association declaration of trust. That being, and then with the associated articles, that that is something that is used by other homeowner associations? This, this, the way you did it, I just never heard of anything like that. And then if it was used other places, where was it used? When was it used? And has it demonstrated to be legal and binding in a court?
Well, Mr. Dennis, I think your question is one of the same ones that Attorney Questle has asked. Right, Amy, or?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, so she's going to be discussing that with Mark's attorney between now and our next meeting.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Was there anything else you wanted to bring up?
I didn't want to go into any details on the document at this point, but there's a bunch of stuff. But like I said, people are going to work through that, and I hope we'll have an opportunity to see it before the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Minich.
Will we get an opportunity to see that before the next meeting?
It it will be a public record as soon as it's put on the agenda for next month. And I'll ask Leanne if she can send you a copy.
And I appreciate that. Can I ask you one other question? How soon before the next meeting, not maybe two or three days? Could it at least be a week before the meeting? Would that be fair?
Yes.
That's what we're working on right now. That's why I mentioned to Amy that maybe she wants to work for a couple of weeks, but then we need at least a week to look at it after it's been finalized.
And I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
One of the other things that we might want to be sure to include, and I mentioned before, is the piping and which of the affordable units, so long as they're not disproportionately the long ones.
Right.
And what, if we do the homeowners association, what prevents the homeowners association from voting to change any of the things? Do we need a deed restriction in addition to the homeowners association in order to prevent the homeowners association in the future changing the percent, changing the testing?
Correct. I will make sure that we have something. That's a good point.
Seth, you can speak.
Thank you, board members. This is Seth Donahoe with Dillison Roy. I don't want to change topics on you, but we did actually send over an easement plan before the new year, and that was revised according to your request at the last meeting. So I just want to make sure that that's meets the intent of what you requested.
Is that the one that you have yellow all around the edges?
Yeah, we we sent you actual, the actual plan in the black and white, and then we showed a one with yellow and green. So you had requested that we separate the area that has the landscape that's to be preserved from the other easement. Previously, they were one big easement, and the intent was for the language within the easement to describe what could be done there. But for clarity, we've made two separate easements so that the landscape issue isn't blurred with the utility issues.
Ms. Lynn, you're muted again.
Seth, I never received hard copies of those documents. We did get it electronically and I sent it out, but I never received the hard copies.
They were sent via US mail. My understanding is that the mail may have some issues now, so I'll have Mr. Rhodes deliver some to the town hall drop box.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know.
And I'll take one outside outside when you get them.
Okay, yep.
Okay, does anyone have anything else? How do you feel about waiting until next month to pursue things after our counsel and their counsel has had a chance to go over the document?
Sounds good.
Jim?
Seems like the thing to do.
Okay. And we want it to be on the 10th of February? Amy, you're available. Mr. Donahue, you're available on the 10th?
I will be.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to continue the hearing for the Capes of Berlin to allow time for the petitioner to revise the homeowners association and identifies certain items on the plans until February 10th at 6 o'clock.
We'll move.
Second.
Okay, we Mr. Royer is and Danny, did you second?
Correct.
Okay. I'll take a roll call vote. I'm a yay. Pat?
Yay.
Jim?
Yay.
Danny?
Yay.
Keith?
Yay.
Susanna?
Yay.
Ginny?
Yay.
Okay, I think we have voted to continue the hearing. We have a few minutes before our next meeting.
Oh, good. No.
Did you happen to find what I'm talking about that was sent from around 5:30 this afternoon?
Um, let me look. You said it was sent by email?
Yes.
From Mr. Cook? I see two things that came in, one from Brian Falk.
Yeah, Brian Falk is the one I'm concerned about.
Okay, yep. Yeah, he sent a letter. And then there was also something that came through at 5:30 from a Jeffrey Cook, who I vote with. He is the building commissioner for the city of Marlborough.
Yes. If I may, as long as it has the attachments, could you send it to all of the board members and include town council?
No, do that right now.
So so Madam Chair, with regard to the the C3 permitting, if the board does not conclude tonight, which I'm I don't think you would, if you wanted to continue that also to February 10th, I will have that on my calendar and I can join you at that time.
Okay, so if we were to make it 7 o'clock on the 10th, that would be okay?
That would work out great.
Has anyone has any of the other members, I don't know, seen the letter from Brian Falk?
No, I have not.
No, it only went to you and I, Lynn. I'm forwarding it now.
Okay. Because we have a few minutes before we open the hearing and I think you'll find it interesting.
I have a I have a question. I switched microphones. Do I sound better now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, did Susanna, did you want to relate your question to Amy while we're in between here?
Um, yeah, I'll just ask it more generally than the detailed email I sent you.
Okay, yeah.
Um, can you, Amy, I don't understand. I was asked this question and I wasn't sure the right way to answer it, but essentially, the question was how come the planning board is having meetings, but the zoning board is not? And I remembered something about chapter 53 or something like that. But my answer, my short answer was because that's what town council told us. So I was wondering if you could explain. I know it's all done now, but if you could just explain why we were not holding meetings better so I can understand it.
So you weren't holding meetings from March to what, November?
December 1st.
Yeah, okay. So first of all, you don't necessarily have to hold meetings. Your meetings are most definitely plan driven and so you have to take a plan and you have to look at the plan. You have to accept evidence from multiple people. And so it's very, very hard to do that on, you know, a Zoom platform, a virtual platform. However, you are not required to hold a meeting. You technically, you were not required to hold a meeting until the the chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020. That was that's been superseded by chapter 201 of the Acts of 2020, which basically said that all deadlines will commence December 1st. So as of December 1st, 2020, you are you now have deadlines. So therefore, when a special permit is filed, you have 65 days to hold a hearing. When a comprehensive permit is filed, you have 30 days to hold a to hold a hearing. Prior to that, you did not have those timelines. Your timelines were 45 days from the stop from the termination of the state of emergency. So
Yeah, because the question was why? Why was planning board allowed to have meetings, but we we were not holding them?
Planning board was was not. I wouldn't say allowed or not allowed. It's your choice whether to hold the hearings or not. I think that this board, you know, determined that you've got some, you know, some tricky applications in front of you. It would have been nice for us to all be in one room to hold these hearings, but unfortunately, we found, you know, I think people thought that, well, I can tell you, I thought that on March 10th that I would be back two weeks later. And that didn't happen. And then in the summer, I thought I would be back in September. That didn't happen. In September, I thought I would be back in December. That didn't happen. Now we're in January and I don't even know when we're going to be back. But, you know, I think that it's it's just common sense that, you know, once we reach a point, and I think the legislature reached this point where it said, okay, basically, we have to do something because we've got to we've got to get developments moving and things like that. But the board did nothing wrong by not holding meetings.
Well, and we had a we had a neighbor complaint about not being able to see what was necessary to see in order for them to participate wholly.
Exactly.
Some of these plans cannot be seen
On phones.
in detail on the screen.
Correct. And if you are, so the obviously, as you know, the Attorney General's Office has or the governor issued an order modifying the open meeting law to allow for virtual hearings. And with regard to virtual hearings, you know, boards should log in on Zoom. They should be, you know, on camera at all times. However, we run into instances like poor Ginny that, you know, she's on the phone right now. And it you can't if somebody does a screen share, you can't see that on your phone. So it puts the board and the public at a disadvantage if you have a complex hearing where the board can't, you know, the the public or the board can't necessarily see the plan that's in front of them.
And it's it's also my understanding that what we do generally gets filed at the Registry of Deeds and planning board not so much, or am I wrong about that?
It all depends. I mean, most of their stuff, I think, would get filed at the Registry of Deeds also.
Yes.
Okay.
You know, because they do subdivisions and that's
Those definitely would be. Yeah. Yeah. You know, and again, I'm it appears that the zoning board of appeals in in Berlin is a little bit the zoning bylaw bestows you know, a lot on you guys. So you know, perhaps the planning board didn't have, you know, as many as many large projects as the ZBA did in front of them at the time. And and I will say that it was my advice on large projects for boards to not go forward until they were comfortable going forward and on a virtual platform. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going forward with the Capes of Berlin. Hopefully, you'll be able to see, work with Mr. Donahue, Amy, and get us on track so that we have at least maybe a week to look at the product of your labors.
I will. I will make sure that there's something submitted to you guys by February 3rd. My, like I said, I did a cursory review and I have handwritten notes. I would turn those into track changes. I'll go through you know, detailed. And then if the members want to send any comments to Leanne, she can forward them to me. And then, you know, I'll forward everything to Attorney Haverty and we'll have a conversation and get something to you guys.
Everybody happy with that?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So I will see you guys on the 10th of February.
Okay, please read the emails that
Yeah, I will. Thank you. About C3. Okay, thanks, guys. Have a good night. All right.
Hi, Amy.
Hi, thank you.
Bye, thank you. How about if we skip down and because we have about 15 minutes before we can start the next hearing? And do, let's see, minutes?
I move that we accept the the meeting minutes of
December 9.
9. As written.
Okay, that's the motion is made by Danny. Is there a second?
Second.
By Jim? Okay, I'll take a roll call. I'm an I. Susanna?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Okay. We're all set with minutes. We don't have anything under warrants, do we? Leanne?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Danny, nothing under warrants, right?
Nothing whatsoever. We haven't spent
Okay. What about availability for the next meeting, which maybe we should have talked about before we continued the hearing? Is there anyone that's not going to be available on February 10th?
I may be late. But that's okay. No, I'll be. Would someone, would an associate like to do the marijuana and I do the sitting instead of the present for that? Can we do that, Lynn?
Um, I think if you want to recuse yourself from something that is perfectly well up to you.
I'd like a break. Would someone like to do the other one?
I'll go.
You're in.
That was easy.
Piece of cake. Thanks.
The only thing that I'll ask you to do, Pat, is just mention when you go on that you're not available or
That I'm a sitting member?
Yeah, to be a sitting member. Okay, if you choose not to. It's going to be interesting, I'll tell you. Okay.
But Lynn, we have the annual report.
Oh, yes, I didn't see that on the agenda, but okay, yeah. Did everybody get the annual report?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Okay, anyone have any comments? Want to make any changes?
Looks good.
Okay. All right, we'll vote on it. I'm an I. Well, someone make a motion to approve the annual report?
We'll move. Second.
Okay, that was who?
Jim and Danny.
Okay. I'm an I. Susanna?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Pat Jackson?
Oh, I'm sorry. Aye.
And Jim?
Aye.
And Ginny?
Aye.
Okay, so we we have that. We've got availability. Does anybody have anything they want to bring up that's unforeseen?
My computer.
Oh. I just I just activated Ale X A unintentionally, so she doesn't want to be quiet.
Oh, dear.
So did everybody have a nice holiday?
It was very quiet.
Quiet and very different.
Yeah, very different. Well, let's hope by summer, we're back to something near normal. And I apologize. I don't know what happened to me earlier, but maybe it's just the nature of what we were doing or something. I don't know. Nice, we haven't had too much snow this year.
Nice that it's gone away.
Pat, how's your paddock? Mine is a disaster.
I just let them back out there. I'm probably gonna have to like reseed it about 12 times. It's getting pretty chewed up.
Yeah, and then it freezes like that.
Yeah, it rocks.
Break your ankle kind of stuff.
They're still eating grass out there, though, which is amazing.
Yeah, mine were eating grass today.
Isn't it amazing? There's still green grass?
Mm hmm.
Like eating frozen food.
Yeah.
Like dessert, it's popsicles or something.
Yeah.
Okay, would you like that we take a break for 10 minutes? And if anybody has anything they want to do, they can do it?
Oh, that'd be nice.
Okay, I'll declare a break for 10 minutes and we'll resume at 7 o'clock.
Sounds good.
So, Leanne, do we pause recording for this? We paused recording right now, right?
Who?
Pause recording for this break, I assume?
Sure, why not?
Yeah, I think Leanne's already on break.
All right, I'm gonna pause it.
Sorry, I forgot I was muted and yeah, I did take a break.
Leanne, should we pause? Yeah.
Yeah, I would pause.
We tried to prevent this, but you know, who knew that the Capes of Berlin would be as quick as it was?
I started recording again, by the way.
Okay. All right, so I will just administratively say that have you received a resubmission?
The clerk has. She has not stamped and dated and given me a hard copy, but they sent they withdrew via email dated January 10th, Sunday, which Eloise, the town clerk, did receive and accept. They submitted a new application, but I have not received a stamped signed copy by the town clerk.
Okay, can we do this? I know we had a posting ready to go, right? Or we had the posting for this month, which they never posted and they never sent out to the folks. So when you receive from the town clerk, and maybe you could even ask her when you're in to get that copy, could you just give use the same posting, just changing the date and time?
So what are we are we gonna do the same time, 7 o'clock next month?
Well, I'm Well, I'm trying, I think we're gonna need an hour for, we'll see what the rest of the folks feel, but I think we're gonna need an hour for Capes of Berlin. Do you folks agree?
Yes.
So 6, 7 for the Capes?
Yeah, so we'll set 6:00 PM for the Capes, right? And then for 7 o'clock, why don't we do, we're gonna have 159 Lyman Road. That's the in-law apartment that was out there before. I don't know that that's gonna take a long time because I know Rich has been working with the homeowner to make sure that everything is as it should be. Then I have a feeling we're gonna need to continue Bana Door till next month.
So you want to do the 7 Lyman Road at 7 o'clock?
Yeah, and then we'll do 7:30 for Bana Door. Is that good? The only thing I'm afraid of is, you know, it's sort of like when we put Lyman in there and figured for half an hour, okay, and then, you know, things didn't work out. We thought he was kind of, or at least I thought he was kind of hot to trot and wanted to get his special permit.
Yeah, well, he filed really early. He filed in December and then kind of laid low with it for a while.
Okay, is that okay with everyone? We'll do 6:00 PM, the Capes of Berlin, 7:00 PM, the in-law apartment at 157 Lyman Road. And if we need to extend Bana Door or Bana Road, we'll do that at 7:30. Is that okay with folks?
Yes.
I'll just say Amy's good, isn't she?
Yes.
And accommodating. And it's too bad we had Lyman Road on the agenda or whatever, but because I've asked for her to be on with C3. Did you have a chance to look at that correspondence?
Just now. When did this come in?
Well, just what Leanne sent you tonight.
Yep.
I forwarded it tonight during the meeting.
Yeah.
I do not have office hours on Wednesday, so I didn't see the email until this evening when the meeting started.
Wow, good timing. Did anybody anticipate this? Was there any hint of this before this letter, or?
Nope.
Well, we didn't anticipate anything coming from the individual that filed. But when we get into the hearing, that there has been an outstanding issue, a couple of them. But we'll see, you know, how things go at the hearing.
Well, when this was circulated, I sent a email back to Leanne questioning whether this should be forwarded to the town of Marlborough, simply because it does border their property in Marlborough. And I don't think, since I've been on the board, I don't think we've ever done that before. I don't think we've ever been in that situation. But there is a thing in Chapter 40A of the Mass General Laws that requires us to do that. So I'm assuming that's how they got notified.
I don't know-
They also were on the abutters list, so a certified letter did go because they're, the town of Marlborough, city of Marlborough was on the abutter list.
Oh my God, we have another 20 minutes. I apologize, guys. I know, you know, time is kind of precious these days and sitting waiting is not fun. Jenny, how did you spend your holidays?
Hunkered down in Berlin and New Hampshire. I got a big Christmas present in New Hampshire.
Really?
Yeah, a three-foot oak tree came right crashing down on my deck.
Lovely.
Yes.
Firewood?
It was the neighbor's tree.
But was it an act of God?
No, because there was cables in it. And the cables were broken.
Oh, you mean cables holding the oak tree together?
Yes. So we'll see what that does with the insurance companies.
Well, I'm glad it was just your deck.
Never touched the screen or single on the roof or any siding.
That was lucky.
Yeah.
Dennis, my neighbor here on Coburn Road, a big tree went through his house on Christmas Day.
Oh, no.
Yeah, there was no notice of it on, you know, the Facebook pages or in the paper, but it was a big giant tree and it went right through his house.
Which one?
Uh, he's one up beyond me, so it must be 27 Coburn or-
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
The, the log cabin?
No, before that.
Yep.
Oh.
How are we doing for COVID cases? Does anybody know?
I can check right now.
Yeah, the new numbers won't be out until tomorrow, but last week we had, I think it was 20 cases in the last two weeks.
Wow. That's a lot for the size of our community.
Well, it was up to 20 previously and then it dropped down to, they do a rolling two-week thing. So we were up to 20 right around Christmas time. And then it dropped down to seven, or it dropped down to 14, then dropped down to seven, then it would shot back up to 20 again, so. I don't really know, I don't know if anybody's been involved, but I don't leave my house either, so.
Anybody know what today's count was for the state?
No.
I'm looking it up right now, hold on.
Because it was kind of scary when it was up over 7,000 there for three days in a row.
I think it's like 4,500 today.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
5,5,200 confirmed cases today.
For Massachusetts?
Yeah, and for Berlin, we're up to 100 confirmed cases, 19 new in the past 14 days. I'm getting this on the, the bostonglobe.com.
Yeah, I'm wondering. I didn't hear the final outcome, but they stopped mass at St. Joseph's because the priest was sick.
Ew.
And was going for COVID testing.
Fairly easy for the testing. You go down to the skating rink, it isn't too, too bad.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
In Marlborough?
Yes, we've spun through the Marlborough Hospital.
Is it free?
Yeah. I did. It took a couple hours. There's, you sit in your car, so the mistake I made is I didn't bring coffee because I was worried about, you know, having to sit for two hours, but actually there are porta-potties there and, you know, it wasn't too bad, actually. It was, it was-
Do you have to sign up in advance?
No.
Uh, no, we just, I just stood there.
Went at 6 o'clock and I was like 60th in line.
Wow.
6 o'clock in the morning?
Yeah, yes, but I was home by 8. So it wasn't too, too bad.
How long did it take you to get the results?
Because I have chatter, it took till Monday evening about 4:30 after fighting and fighting and fighting all weekend.
Because you have tatter?
Chatter.
Oh, chatter.
The, my email thing.
Ah, how about you, Keith?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
How long did it take you to get the results?
Oh, less than 24 hours.
Wow, what, did they email them to you or call you or?
Yep, you get, you get a text. You have to, you know, you have to give them your phone and everything, but you get a text notice. I think I got two, one in 12 hours and then one just before 24. And they tell you that if you're positive, they'll, you're gonna get a phone call instead of a text result. But it was very well organized and, you know, it didn't, it wasn't the first, it wasn't painful. It wasn't those deep swabs. It was just, you know, doing it yourself. And, yeah, I'm glad we did it. We did it for the holiday. Everybody, we saw, we did see our kids, but everybody got tested. Every, everybody quarantined two weeks before and still got tested. And so we figured that was safe.
Well, it's interesting to see what the schools are doing. Bravo to Algonquin over in Northborough. The CARES program will pay for testing of students, so they've opened up every Monday. They individually test those kids that have the permission of their parents. The commissioner just came out and he wants to do what they're gonna call pool testing. And what they do is they take groups of 10 kids and they put all of their swabs in the same container and test, will test once a week. And then if the, if the pool comes back positive, they test each individual, otherwise they don't. So every school's gonna have that option. I'm not sure every school's gonna avail themselves of it, but it makes sense to me.
Yeah, that was, that was Governor Baker's announcement last week, was gonna have-
Right.
Make that available to all the schools.
Yeah, after they go through some training and stuff.
Yeah, we're getting close. My daughter's a nurse and she's had her first phase of vaccination already. I think- There's light at the end of the tunnel.
Let's hope it's not a freight train coming in the opposite direction.
All right.
Here we go. Keith's the optimist, I'm the pessimist.
You know, my, my, I had so many responses about like, you know, today's politics and so on. My mind just short-circuited, but I'll just leave it dead.
That's crazy. It's a crazy time we're living in. I did watch the voting and, and some of the speeches on C-SPAN for the impeachment.
Just to torture yourself?
Um, just to see how the other side thinks, I think, you know. I mean, there's, there's good arguments on both sides, I guess, but boy, this was scary.
Three of us. I'm reading a book on the yellow fever of 1878.
It's very scary, yeah.
Well, you know, it's interesting reading people's attitudes back then and you really haven't changed all that much.
Well, and they didn't have a lot of the sanitary conditions we have now. I mean-
No, but apparently there is this huge debate in Memphis whether to quarantine or not quarantine.
Sounds about right for being Memphis, yep. Have we heard anything about town meeting or that they postponed? They're not gonna hold it until May, are they?
I haven't heard anything, but I think they're just gonna wait to annual town meeting in May.
It makes sense.
Hey Ginny, were you gonna say something and I talked over you earlier?
No. Keith, how are your pups doing?
Oh, it's funny that you would ask. It's, well, this is a recorded meeting. I don't know how much I want to give away here, but my daughter's, she went to the dog park. She lives in Portland, Maine. And she went to the dog park and her dog was attacked by a much bigger dog. Her dog's about 50 pounds. And apparently it was a, you know, 150, 200-pound big mastiff dog that really, you know, did a number on her. And so she's with us now because Heather's working, she, you know. And so her pup is here, but she saw the vet today. She saw a local vet here in Berlin who, you know, we're just keeping an eye on her. So, but other than that, the other pups are okay. She'll be okay.
She doing okay, though? She gonna be okay?
Yeah, she's a tough little dog. She's, she's scrappy. She's, my daughter got her in Baltimore when she was going to college. And she's a true Baltimore dog. She's, she fights our dogs and always wins, so I'm kind of surprised that any dog could get the upper hand on her.
Aw.
Well, one did. But yeah, she'll be okay. She's just beat up.
That's scary.
Yeah.
So did they resolve it up there? What do they do? Is it, you know, are you taking your own risk when you go to a dog pack or how do they view that up there?
Um, you know what? I'm, I'm not sure, but there was a lot of drama. I guess the dog, you know, was really trying to hurt my, my daughter's dog and a lot of, several people tried to intervene and break the two up. And the other dog actually bit two separate people, one of them that had to go to the hospital, I guess, so. So the police got involved and it was definitely a big ordeal. So I don't know. I actually don't know what the laws are about that.
I'm just wondering who's gonna have to pay for the medical bill, you know, the vet bills.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the question now, the vet want to know if the other dog had, you know, rabies shots. We thought we didn't have to worry about that because she's had her rabies vaccines. But the vet explained that you still need to know and if, if they didn't have rabies shots, then, you know, she needs to get a booster, so I wasn't aware of that.
And also, if you don't know, you have to quarantine your dog for six months, even if your dog is up to date on, on the vaccine.
Wow.
For six months?
Yeah, it might be down to four, but I think it was, it was six.
Wow.
Yeah.
It's really too bad. I think the other dog's owner, it sounds like, you know, it's not a bad person. It just, the dog they own is just more dog than they can handle. And it's just a bad situation, but it's funny you would ask because normally our dog, everybody's good, but today there is a little dog drama going on in our life.
See, I was just being psychic again.
When did that happen, Keith?
Last night, just last night.
Ouch.
Oh.
She drove all night to get the dog to you here? Wow.
We do, because she's a nurse. She's, she works three 12-hour shifts and then has four days off. So when she's working, her and I meet, you know, up in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and I take her dog for three days. We've been doing that since she's been here in the East Coast.
Oh, isn't that nice?
Yeah.
Aren't you a good dad?
I try to be.
Well, it sounds like you succeed.
He's a pushover.
I mean, she was in Baltimore for two years and then Colorado for a year, so we're just thankful that she's within driving distance. I am very happy to meet her and at least look at her through the window. We still can't hug or, you know, she's a nurse. COVID every day. She's in the ER room, so.
How many kids do you have, Keith?
Two, two adults. One's 29 and one is 26. Two, two adults. One's 29 and one is 26.
She did get her first shot though, Keith?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I guess, um, I mean, she's saying that some people that have gotten the vaccine have still gotten sick. So I don't know what's going on with that, but.
My niece got both of them. She's a nurse too, and, um, the second one hit her kind of hard.
Yeah.
The second shot, yeah. She got sick from the second shot, but they're coming anyway.
Yeah.
Well, the thing that I was looking forward to is Johnson and Johnson was one shot.
Yeah.
But now they're delayed two months because of some technical problem they're having.
Yeah, my friend was offered the, the vaccine because she works for the, uh, police department in another town and she turned it down and I felt like saying, why didn't you give it to me? I could have gone and gotten it.
I heard in some places they're throwing out some of the vaccine because they get all ready to go do so many people. And then some of the people refuse to be done. So once they've thawed the, um, vaccine, vaccine, they, they can't use it.
Yeah, they should have a standby, you know, like the airlines, you know?
Yes.
It's an empty vaccine. It's yours.
I mean, even if you're passing out in the front of the building, you know, hey, come here, I want a vaccine.
Well, apparently they did that out in California. The, um, something happened to the refrigeration system and they noticed it and they had all these, I think it was like 200 something vaccines that they had two hours to distribute. And they just went out to every nursing home and used them all up.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. It turns out they're used to that because they have wildfires so often that they're used to the power going out.
Oh.
If you think that they might want to have a generator backup, but you know.
So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people in attendance, listening to our little personal stories here.
Oh, it must be exciting for them. Yeah.
Well, they'll get to know us a little better. Um, because we've got about four minutes and then we can start. Is, uh, are the people attending, does it look like they're off for our next hearing, Keith, or are they hangovers from last time or?
Um, the only hangover from last time is Richard Hanks. Everybody else is new. The names I recognize are Peter Hoffman and, uh, Louise. But everybody else seems to be here for.
Well, well, Richard Hanks is the building inspector.
Yes, I would expect he's been waiting for this hearing.
Nope.
Spending Wednesdays with the ZBA.
He's all caught up watching Schitt's Creek and he's got nothing else to do.
Is that good? I haven't seen that. Is that worth watching?
That's funny.
Yeah.
Everyone says it is, but it, I don't know. I didn't get into it.
I didn't like it. It seemed very weekend at Bernie's to me. I don't know.
Well, I'm out of, I think I've watched all of Netflix at this point, so I need suggestions.
We've been watching Colony.
Colony?
Yeah. Yeah. It's all, you know, collapse of the world, that sort of thing. Perfectly timely.
Oh, somehow Jim, that seems appropriate for you. I don't know why, but.
Yeah, one of these days Jim's just going to go off grid on us.
He almost is up there. I think he's like the last house on the grid. He's ready to just unplug.
Okay, I think we could start recording again and I'll just read through, uh, because there's been so much time in between.
Well, the recording's been on since seven o'clock now, Lynn, so.
All right. Well, that's fine. Um, I'm just going to, uh, say good evening to those that have joined us since we began, um, this evening. And welcome to the January 13th meeting of the Berlin zoning board of appeals. Please be advised that the image and voice of participants and attendees of this meeting and hearings may be recorded for the record. And I think before we open the hearing, I can even introduce the people because it's just about 7:30. Could we take down the screen share?
What are we doing?
I don't know.
Do we have a I don't know what's going on here with me then. I've got a The only one I can see is Keith. I'm wondering why that is.
Oh, you have, you probably have, um, speaker view instead of gallery view. You see.
In the upper right hand corner.
Yeah.
If you move your mouse up there.
Yeah.
And click on gallery view. Or you can just look at me through this whole meeting.
And now I, that's whoever's speaking that I'm seeing.
Yeah, that's, that's still speaker view.
See, you have to roll your mouse up into the upper right hand corner and then.
I did, I did. And all I see up there is.
Um, Lynn, you can also hit alt and F1 at the same time. Alt F1.
No, that didn't do anything.
Alt F2, try alt F2.
Should I just run the, that didn't do anything either. Hold on a second.
I can keep messing with her. Keep turning in circles. Cluck like a chicken.
Well, if he doesn't fix it, Keith, you're just going to have to lip sync. Everybody else is speaking.
Yeah.
Oh, tech support's here.
Yeah. Ah, okay. Thanks, Trace. Okay, I, uh, will declare the hearing for, um, C3 Industries LLC or Berlin, CC Berlin Industries LLC, um, open. I'll introduce to, um, the folks that are participating. I'm Lynn Ryan. We have, if you'd raise your hand, Susie and Roberts.
Hello.
We have Dennis Batlett.
Oh.
We have Pat Jackson.
Yep.
We have Jim Royer.
Evening.
Keith, Susie. And Leanne, um, Leahy and Ginny Zakatinsky. Who's, who's present at the hearing to represent the petitioner?
If you're here to represent the petitioner, please raise your hand and we can allow you to speak. Yeah, I've got two people not allowed to talk.
Hello, you've got Ankor Runta here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, I'm the CEO of C3 Industries. And I believe we should have Garrett Horstfall as well from Kelly Engineering.
Uh, present.
Great. And we should have Sean Kelly as well, who's our traffic engineer on the project.
Yep, I'm here.
Great. So the three of us are representing the project today.
All right, thank you. What we usually do is allow the, um, petitioner to make a presentation to the board. So if you would like to go ahead and do that, either in the form of screen sharing or.
Great. Yeah, Garrett, if you could please, uh, share your screen and we can go through the materials.
Allow me to, uh, share my screen. I will, uh, bring up the presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to have to promote you to panelist. So let me do that. That's different. Let me, I guess we can promote everybody to panelist then.
Is any one of the three of you counsel?
No, we, we don't have counsel on today.
Okay, so every, uh, three of you are promoted. You should be able to share your screen.
Great. Uh, I think Garrett's doing that. Thank you.
Garrett's got a whole lot of power.
PDF management. I'm just trying to, you know. Sure we all, you guys can all see that, I, I assume now?
Yes.
Great. So, um, just for the record again, uh, Garrett Horstfall with, uh, Kelly Engineering Group, um, present here tonight, um, again with Ankor Runta from C3, uh, Berlin LLC, the applicant, um, as well as Sean Kelly, um, with Vanoss and Associates, uh, the traffic engineer. I also believe, um, Keith Bogrom, the, uh, property owner, um, is on the call as well. Um, so we're before you tonight, um, this evening for, uh, property, um, with a known as, you know, physical address of 64, um, you know, Banner Road, um, it's actually access, um, you know, it's really access easement, uh, 50 foot wide, um, in Marlboro, um, off of Donald J Lynch Boulevard. And just, um, we're respectfully requesting, um, here tonight, um, special permit for the proposed, um, you know, marijuana dispensary use as well as, um, you know, site plan approval, um, for the proposed project. And, um, I'd just like to turn it over to Ankor, Ankor, um, who will just, you know, explain some of, um, the background he has, um, in the industry. And, um, you know, his company, um, a bit more, um, just to familiarize the town, um, with the business.
Great. Thank you, Garrett. Uh, and thank you to the board for giving us the opportunity to present tonight. Um, as you may know, I, I think some of, uh, some of you have participated in some of the meetings that we've hosted before. Uh, we've been working on this project for about a year now, uh, since we first presented to the select board in Berlin. Uh, and, and since then, we've also participated in a community meeting process, uh, as well as gone through a host agreement process, uh, with the town administrator and town council. Uh, so we're really excited about this project. We've been working on it for some time. Uh, I thought I would just give you a bit of background on the company, uh, before we dive into the details of the site. Uh, and again, I, I, I'm aware that some of you may have heard this before, so I apologize in advance if this is, uh, repetitive, but I just felt like some context might be helpful. Uh, so just quickly about us, uh, our company was formed in 2016. It's based in Michigan. Uh, we are active as cannabis operators in four states today. Uh, that's Michigan, Massachusetts, Missouri and Oregon. Uh, we're active both on the production side of the business. So we operate, uh, large scale production facilities in the cannabis industry. And we also are active on the retail side of the business, operating retail stores. Um, so this slide here has a, a bit of an overview on, uh, our overall profile today. Uh, uh, next slide, please, Garrett. Uh, uh, there's four primary members of our, of our, uh, executive team, uh, myself, uh, and three others. Uh, Vishal and I, who are, we're, we're brothers, we're the primary co-founders. Our backgrounds are really in the corporate finance world. Uh, so I was a, a corporate lawyer and an investment banker in New York, uh, to start my career. Uh, Vishal was in investment banking and then private equity, and we both left those careers to launch this business a few years ago. Uh, our third partner, Joel, uh, has a long background in the Colorado cannabis industry and built a very strong, uh, skill set in the operations part of the business. Uh, and our chief operating officer, Sameep Shah, he's got a deep background in medical, uh, and in, in heavily regulated medical retail businesses. He's, he was the CEO of medical imaging and radiology business prior to joining us. Uh, so we've got a strong team, I think, with a lot of different relevant background for our industry. Uh, I've got a, a fair amount of information in here. I, I really meant this as a reference, uh, for the board, so I won't go through all of the details. Uh, we have provided a lot of information here on the other, uh, facilities that we operate. Uh, as I mentioned, we are active in four states today. Uh, what may be most relevant for this discussion is we are building out a, a platform in Massachusetts currently. Uh, and so we're currently in construction on a 40,000 square foot production facility in Franklin. Uh, that process, that construction project started in July and is expected to, uh, be complete at the end of June, and it will go into operations then. Uh, next slide, please, Garrett. Uh, we've also got, uh, a, a retail presence in Massachusetts beyond just Berlin. Uh, so you do have a site that's approved in the Dorchester neighborhood of Boston. Uh, and then we are waiting right now for final approvals from the select board in Natick as well for a site that we have. So, uh, our hope is that, uh, that we'll be able to get approvals in Berlin and, and have our store here. Uh, and then the other two would be in Boston and in Natick, and you're allowed three under the state rules in Massachusetts. So that would be our three retail locations. Um, just a quick, uh, uh, point on our strategy. Um, we're heavily focused on trying to build one of the best teams in the industry. Um, so we've got a lot of great people beyond the four people I mentioned earlier with a lot of deep experience in operating, uh, cannabis businesses in licensed markets. Uh, we're also really focused on brand and then our retail experience. Uh, so those are key areas of focus for us. We want to provide a really high quality retail experience. Uh, we want to, uh, be really excelling in areas of customer service and product quality. Uh, so these are some of the key, key focus areas for our company. Uh, I've just included some pictures here of what some of our facilities look like to give, uh, to give people a sense. Uh, uh, next slide, please, Garrett. And here, here, there's just a rendering of what our facility in Franklin will look like. That's currently in construction, uh, that I mentioned previously. Uh, just a couple of points on our operations as well. And again, I can go into more detail on this if, if anybody would like. Uh, we are under some very strict regulation in our business, uh, both at the state level and the local level. Um, so one area that's a very specific focus, uh, in the state rules is security. Uh, so we are under pretty strict security requirements. Uh, we've actually sent our detailed security plan and security diagrams, uh, to Chief Galvin of the Berlin Police for his review. Uh, and he did go through a review process with us and provided some comments that we incorporated into our security plans. And, and I believe he should have, uh, uh, maybe sent you a note, uh, referencing that process that we've gone through, but we have, uh, vetted our approach to both, our security equipment, the layout of that equipment, and then some of our security operating procedures as well with the chief, and, and I think he's comfortable. Uh, so we are under some pretty strict security regulation, which we will implement here. Uh, next page, please, Garrett. Uh, another just point I wanted to make is we're under very strict rules of who can access these stores. Uh, and specifically we are prohibited from allowing any minors, uh, either as employees or customers. And so that's a very, uh, strict rule that we follow. Uh, of course, our licensing is subject to our compliance with all of these regulations. So, uh, compliance is really almost a key aspect of our business in a lot of ways. Uh, so again, we'll have very strict requirements on, uh, on being, on checking identification, on limiting access to the facility to anyone that's not allowed, and particularly minors. Uh, we won't hire anyone that's under 21. And so that's just another key part of our operations. Uh, I think that's the end of the background piece. I know Garrett's going to provide some detail on the site. Uh, I did just want to mention before he did that, uh, I, we were listening on, uh, earlier in the evening. Uh, we are aware of the letter that was submitted by Marlboro. Um, uh, we first saw it at about 5:30 today. So unfortunately it just came before the hearing. So, uh, we are aware of that. Um, I, I'm happy to address that. We did look into some of these access related points right when we started this process about a year ago, uh, and, and we didn't believe, uh, that there were any concerns there, uh, but, but certainly we're, we're happy to give our perspective on it and then follow up with our council if needed or with the, uh, with the town council as well as with Marlboro to, to figure out, uh, uh, where they're coming from on this. But I did just want to mention that, uh, we were made aware of it. I think that the email that it was sent on was copied to both us as well as your board. So, uh, that just happened a couple of hours ago. So we're, uh, reacting to it kind of in real time as well. Uh, but we did notify them, uh, of the hearing this evening. I, I believe we're required to do that. Uh, to, to notify all abutting communities. And so, uh, we have sent certified mailers out, uh, to all abutters, even on the Marlboro side, as well as to the, the, the city of Marlboro itself. So that was, uh, the certified letter that you may have seen in the attachment there. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that it is something that we're aware of and I'm, I'm sure it's, uh, uh, something to discuss this evening, but, uh, maybe before we do that, if you're, if you're amenable, I'll have Garrett, uh, provide a quick overview of the site first.
Great. Uh, thank you, Ankor. Um, just, uh, for the record again, Garrett Horstfall with, uh, Kelly Engineering Group. Um, as I stated before, it's, um, 64 Banner Road. It's approximately a seven acre parcel and it's a 30,000, uh, square foot existing, um, you know, industrial building, um, you know, the associate.
And the newspaper.
Sorry, continue, Garrett.
Um, so it's a 30,000 square foot existing industrial building, um, with existing par. So it's a 30,000 square foot existing industrial building with existing parking, as well as other site development features throughout the site. The site is bordered by vacant and some undeveloped parcels to the, to the north, west, to the south with the municipal boundary with Marlboro. You know, there's several commercial retail uses located to the south. So as I mentioned before, the, you know, site is accessed through a 50-foot-wide access easement. Approximately, this would be the swath of it through here. You know, this gives us legal access rights to access the land for vehicle use, as well as pedestrian use, as listed in the easement documents that are conveyed to this, to the rights to use access to site. The legal frontage is on River Road West in Berlin for the site. So as I stated before, a lot of the land to the north, east and west is undeveloped. The site bounded, you know, by the North Brook on this, which is represented in this blue line. And just slightly off-site over here is the Assabed River. The buffer zones associated with those riverfront zones is depicted in blue, as well as some BBW lines that are depicted in purple. And we will be filing those intent with the Conservation Commission, you know, for the site plan, site plan improvements, for permitting through them as well as your board. The site today currently has three tenants, if I just zoom in a bit on the PDF. The area with a proposed C3 use would be, would occupy approximately 5,000 square feet of face, space. We've outlined that, you know, in the blue line depicted here. There's an existing marble tenant that occupies about 10,000 square feet. Comedy Connection, which I believe is a food distributor of some high-end meats and the like, and as well as the landscaping business as tenant four. These three uses, which are parked, you know, per employees, per the zoning bylaw, you know, require about five spaces for the use. They're very low employee counts and require about five spaces for all three of these tenants. The proposed use, which we categorize as retail, requires about 25 spaces per zoning. So we have provided, say it again, 60 spaces on site, you know, that far exceeds, you know, what's required by the zoning bylaw. The whole site, which we provided, all of this striping in red today is currently paved. Currently today, a lot of the striping is non-compliant, you know, relative to parking space dimension size, you know, safe vehicular aisle list. So what's shown here is, you know, your standard nine by nineteen and a half foot space, you know, per the zoning bylaw with a 24-foot aisle to provide, you know, safe pedestrian access and vehicular access through the site, you know, consistent with the special permit and site plan review requirements. We will be adding three handicap stalls, you know, required by ADA, as well as, you know, acceptable and appropriate sidewalk with curving for safe access to the proposed tenant, as well as some generous landscaping, you know, in the form of shrubbery and some shade trees throughout the parking lot. You know, today there's very little landscaping throughout the site. We'd like to, you know, make a good approach here and address the site up to make this an attractive place to come to for, you know, the employees, the public, and the other users on the site. Provided two trash receptacles for the existing and proposed units. Users will be, you know, enclosed with, you know, gates and, you know, to be properly screened. You know, the site is served, you know, by septic. It was recently inspected when the property was purchased by Keith Bogrom recently. It passed total five inspection. The system's located throughout here. We've analyzed it, you know, for flow, and then, you know, we believe the flow will accommodate the proposed retail use for total five. As an agreement that Keith has, you know, for another tenant upgrade he did with the Board of Health, we will be installing a new compliant 1,500-gallon septic tank, which will be a two-compartments tank, you know, compliant with, you know, current total five regulations. We provided a narrative to accompany this plan, which we go through some of the requirements for the special permit and site plan approval. We believe we've, you know, met these requirements. And, you know, in summary, we are providing safe, compliant parking area to support the proposed use and uses on site. I'd like to just turn it over to Sean Kelly of Vanoss and Associates. You can just go through traffic findings that his firm prepared.
Thank you, Garrett. And good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Sean Kelly with Vanoss Associates Traffic Engineers involved the project. On behalf of the team, thank you again for having us tonight. If it pleases the board, I think what I'd like to do is just take a few minutes to walk you through the assessment, what our findings were, what our conclusions are, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. So this may be a little tough to see. I know it's, we're, but again, the site is accessed off of Banner Road, which is a local dead-end street that connects into Dumble Boulevard, provides access between Holman Pond Mall Road to the west, and then the mall further east. There are no changes to access proposed as part of the project. They would continue to operate through the unsignalized intersection of the road with Donald Lynch Boulevard. We have gone out and looked at some of the safety characteristics. You know, the site lands out there are excellent. We've looked at the crash data, very low crash history. I think one, one. There was a few offenders, no injuries. So, you know, we have no concerns with safety as far as the current access that serves the site. We could advance the slide. So with respect to the project itself, we ran trip generation calculations. And the way we do this is we utilize data that's published by what's known as the Institute of Transportation Engineers, so the ITE. And the ITE provides rates that tells you that for various land use codes, how much traffic you can expect based on the size of the project. For this particular project, we utilize data for land use code 882 marijuana dispensary. It's the most appropriate category. And what they do is they've done traffic counts at existing operational facilities, and then based on the data they collected, allows us to predict with a, you know, relative certainty what we can expect in a project of that size. So a project like this will generate on a daily basis, you know, anywhere from 1,260 to about 1,300 cars in a day. That's the ins and the outs. So you're looking at a little over 600 in and out. The peak hour flows in the eve really is what we drill down on. That's when the traffic and the roads are heaviest. And you do about 110 trips in the evening, so 55 in, 55 out. Saturday would be the busier time. You'll have about 86 in, 96 out, you know, 182. So basically about a car every two minutes, two cars a minute rather during the evening, and then about, you know, three cars a minute during the Saturday midday. We've also shown just is comparison, you know, what the site does today. Again, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty inactive site. You know, the times I've been out there, I haven't really seen much activity at all. But, but there is a little bit of traffic associated with the existing building. And again, those are much smaller numbers. We can advance one more slide, Garrett. So, you know, in conclusion, you know, the project generates about two to three trips a minute during the busiest hours. You know, we've looked at how the intersections operate, the Donald Lynch Boulevard intersection with Solman Pond Road, and particularly the ramps and, and outside, I, you know, I shop that area. Outside of really peak, you know, holiday seasons, you really don't see backups in these locations that often. It's a, it's a well-designed corridor. There's, you know, number of turn lanes. It's all signalized. It works, it works fairly well and provides good regional access to 290 and via 294, 95. The parking that's proposed, it'll be a total of 60 spaces on the site, 32 to the dispensary is adequate. It'll accommodate the needs of the project during the peak periods. Our recommendations really are focused more on ensuring that, you know, during the initial rollout, that things work smoothly. And what we typically recommend on projects like this, and we've been involved in a number of them over the years, is to have, you know, an initial opening traffic and parking management plan. Typically, we would recommend you have additional staff, whether they be, you know, security staff to help direct traffic in the parking lot, concierge staff, more, more staff to help check in, check out, just to make sure things move smoothly. And then also that the applicant work with the, the town's police department to identify whether they feel it's, you know, required to have a police detail during the opening period, and also to review the traffic and parking to make sure they're, they're comfortable as well. You know, once you get through that initial, you know, peak burst, where there's a curiosity in some instances, just to see it, you know, typically the volume settle in, and it's more and more of these come online. We're finding that the volumes are actually, you know, lowering some of the sites that, you know, in the beginning, when there was only a couple of players in the state, you know, they have to do off-site parking and shuttle customers in and out. But now as the market becomes more saturated, there are more opportunities, you know, you're seeing less traffic at these sites than you did, you know, during the initial, the initial opening period. So that's, that's really, you know, the, the study in a nutshell, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the members of the board might have. Thank you.
Does anyone on the board have any questions?
I have one simple question. I can't remember if Banner Road is a private road.
It is a private road.
And the width and everything is, Denny might know this better, is appropriate for that amount of traffic?
I believe they said it's got a 50-foot easement. So I'm assuming that, if I recall right, probably about a 22, 24-foot wide pavement. Am I correct?
I believe that's what we measured in the field when we did our inventory, was it was around 23 feet width in the vicinity of the site.
So, Denny, just, is that okay?
Yes, that's equivalent to Pleasant Street, River Road, east-west.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a much simpler, much more basic question. What are we actually applying for here? The paperwork that was submitted lists both a marijuana dispensary and in other places, it says a marijuana retail outlet. My understanding is under their state laws here in Massachusetts, so they're two entirely different things. So I just, for clarification, dispensary is related to medical marijuana. A retail outlet is not medical. It's just general use. So I'm not sure if we're doing both here or one or the other.
Yeah, apologies if we weren't consistent in our terminology. It's a marijuana retailer under the local code that we're applying for, which is the general use.
Okay, so there would be no medical marijuana sales?
No, we're not applying for a medical license.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm just gonna check with Leanne. You've got all of the notifications that you need for these folks, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, excellent. Because that was my mistake in not asking upfront. I have a couple of questions. You have an easement, so that, that is your entryway. There are currently three businesses operating out of this building. What's the nature of the three businesses? Are they retail, wholesale? What, what, what are they doing?
Sure, the, the owner, Keith Bogrom, occupies one of the units with a landscaping business. So that's their landscape, that's their headquarters. So that's, that's a landscaping business. His trucks and other equipment are back there, and that's his main office, as well as storage for, for his equipment and other supplies. The, another unit is occupied by a food distribution company. And then the, the third unit that's occupied, I believe, is, I'm sorry, Garrett, you know the detail on this. What is the, the other unit that's just to the, to the east of us?
I believe it's Milano Marble, just a.
Yeah, oh, sorry, that's the marble. Yeah, that's a marble company.
Well, are they retail or wholesale?
I believe they just ship it. I'm not sure if Keith is online. I believe he was, said he was gonna hop on.
Yes, he's an attendee.
Would you like me to promote, what is his last name?
Yeah, Keith Bogrom, yeah, if you could, please.
All right, Mr. Bogrom has been promoted.
Keith, do you mind speaking to a little more detail on that, that tenant that we're speaking of, the marble company?
Yes, to unmute.
Oh, you're on mute, Keith. Keith, we're having trouble hearing you. You may be having an audio issue. I'm sorry, we don't have any audio, Keith. No, it doesn't look like it. It's okay. I, I believe it's just a wholesale business, man. I'm sure, I don't think there's a retail aspect to it, from my understanding.
Okay, the reason I ask, and I don't think you should be responsible for this. This was originally permitted as Banner Door, and they manufactured doors in that building. Since then, it's been divided into four entities. And at no time that I'm aware, perhaps Keith could answer that question too, has anyone come before this board for the need to potentially license any of the other uses or the change in use or anything like that? That's a subject for another time, but I think for purposes of parking, we need, and when we're computing how much parking is needed, we need to know the nature of the businesses.
Absolutely. And I think, Garrett, can you, can you speak to that? I believe you've taken that into your account, into account in the parking calculations that you described, right?
Yes, so, you know, we were provided, you know, employee counts, you know, through ownership, you know, just per perspective, you know, tenant two, you know, two employees, tenant three was three employees, four was four employees. I believe tenant two, the marble, marble establishment, tenant three is the commodity connection to food, food establishment distributor. And, you know, tenant four was the landscaping business operated by Keith. So we did, you know, take into account employee count you provided in order to calculate parking required for zoning of the overall site.
Well, an employee count is not necessarily the ultimate count. It's based upon the use. So this is why I'm looking for what the various, you know, if it's a warehouse, or if it's Marlboro, you know, it's a marble orchard where they just wholesale or re, whether they're wholesale or retail could make a difference as to the way the parking spaces are calculated.
I understand your concern. You know, we've categorized it as, you know, warehousing. We can definitely break it down some more with some more background information for the existing uses.
Yeah, I think you should take a look at it, because I think under warehousing, it goes by square footage, but I could be incorrect. Okay, how do you, now, we do have counsel on this. She was not able to be, and you folks have worked with her in the past, Amy, and we need to resolve the letter from Marlboro, from G C Credit Union.
Absolutely. I think, so on the access question, the letter from Marlboro, as I mentioned, we need to dig into it and make sure we understand exactly what, what objection they're making. But we had looked into this in the beginning and read the language of the easement that this parcel has. We had asked the folks at Kelly Engineering to weigh in on it, and our understanding is that the use that we're proposing is on the parcel in Berlin. The access road is simply that. It's an access road that was granted by easement to this parcel. So the idea that our marijuana use is not allowed on that access road parcel, from our understanding, is not salient to this, and it's not, it's not, it's not a restriction on our ability to use that access road. And it's also commercial properties on that side as well. So it's not as if there are residential properties on, on the, on the Marlboro side. So we had looked into this, and that was our understanding. This, this letter did come as a surprise to us as well. And candidly, we don't believe that what, the, the position that's being taken there is, is correct, but we need to confirm that. And certainly, we can work with the, the town's attorney, and we could, if we need to bring in an attorney as well, that, that we can certainly do that. But our understanding had been that this was a fairly clear-cut scenario, and that what we were proposing wasn't an issue from an access standpoint.
Right, but all I'm saying is some work needs to be done.
Absolutely. Totally understood.
And it would be helpful if you could give us a written declaration of what the other businesses are and how they're categorized, whether it's a warehouse, or a retail, or a wholesale, or whatever it is that they are. Because, as I say, none of them have been permitted in the past. I don't think the board would want to hold that against you, but I think we do have to take it into consideration for parking. Could you tell us where you stand with the Conservation Commission?
Yeah, so we are in the process of filing a noticement, gathering appropriate fees and signatures with them. They are aware of the project. I've communicated with the chair that we'll be filing something up for this project.
Well, I guess one of my concerns is you are very close to wetlands. I don't see an indication on your plan as to whether your parking is paved or unpaved. And I don't know if you're obviously adding parking spaces, which I would assume you are, you know, how the Conservation Commission would feel about where you're gonna put the parking and how close you are to a wetlands. So I think that unless my colleagues feel differently, you need to establish with the Conservation Commission where they would see parking to be. Does that make sense?
Yes, completely understand the concern. All of the parking shown on the plan is currently within, you know, paved areas on site. And it's all within previously disturbed and degraded areas on site. None of the proposed work encroaches outside of any limit of disturbance that's been created on site as of today. So all of the proposed work is in previously disturbed areas and all within, you know, existing paved areas on site.
Okay, but, you know, the Conservation Commission may or may not have something to say about that, because they may be paved, but maybe they shouldn't be, I don't know. But that's something for you to work out with Conservation, and I think we would need to know that before we were to establish a site plan. What about lighting and signs and that sort of thing? I didn't see any of those.
So the existing, there's existing lighting on site today. Obviously, they want this facility to be well-lit. I mean, the intent is to, you know, use the existing lighting on the building today. And relative to signage, I believe, you know, Anker has intentions of putting a sign, which is allowed in that easement, along the end of Donald Lynch Boulevard, which is allowed through easement to appropriately direct people to the property.
Well, I understand that, but for our purposes, we need those things shown on the site plan, where the lighting is going to be. I understand you are saying it's existing, but this is, the existing lighting has never gone through a permit hearing with this board before. And any signage that's on the building or anything like that would need to be mentioned.
Including existing signage as well?
I would think that that would be appropriate. I mean, again, I don't want to hold you folks accountable for anything that has transpired between the original permit way back when and now, but at the same time, I think signage is signage. And we have limitations.
Understood.
Just for clarification, C3 has seen both of the letters involving Marlboro concerning this, correct? One from Digital Federal Credit Union and one from the city of Marlboro itself?
No, I think we've only seen the city letter. We're not aware of the other letter.
Okay, the other letter is actually much more expansive. And one of the conditions, one of the issues that they mentioned in there is apparently DCU actually owns the land that that easement runs across for Banner Road. And their attorney believes that the Marlboro ordinances prohibit putting up any signage down at Donald Lynch Boulevard within that easement.
There is some language in the easement addressing signage. We had provided those documents to the board as part of our submission package. It does mention the erection of a sign, it's very, very kind of high-level language without a lot of detail. So we had expected candidly that that would be something we would flesh out later in the process and go through permitting on and work, you know, with our neighbor in terms of that easement. So candidly, we had not yet gone into, you know, incredible detail on that. But the language of the easement is a bit vague, so it's something we'd need to ultimately work out with them. If it is determined that a sign is not allowed down there, or again, a sign is directly referenced in the easement, so some kind of sign is clearly contemplated. But if we weren't able to improve that sign or add to it, then we would proceed on without that.
Okay, well, just for both your edification, I guess, as well as others who are listening in here from the public, the DCU credit, Digital Credit Union essentially has, I would take this as a letter sent to the Zoning Board of Appeals here in Berlin, which I would take as basically opposition to your proposal. They're reiterating the town or city of Marlboro's claim that that easement can't be used for your facility, and also raising the issues of security and the signage. So I don't know if you've been sent a copy of their letter?
Jim, could I suggest this? The letter is dated-
Today, today.
Well, it's to us, yeah.
Yeah.
But the inside is dated January 13th. Unless any of you object, I would ask Leanne to send a copy of this file, and who wants to get it?
If you could send it to me, please, Leanne, that would be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, because we're definitely gonna want that addressed.
Yeah, I think maybe a question for the board, we'll certainly talk with them as well. The easement language is quite broad and has no qualifications of any kind in it, so I think that-
No, that's not what they're citing, they're citing because of the zoning in Marlboro for the land that the easement runs over is in conflict. So wait until you get the letter, and I think you can, and there are cases and so forth, so.
Sure, yeah, and we can, you know, we can do some legal research as well. I think my understanding from Kelly Engineering and others is that that's a somewhat tenuous position, but we can, we'll look at the letter and try to react accordingly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, Madam Chair, can I ask a question about security?
Sure, absolutely.
I'm just curious, I don't know what the regulations are in the state. All of the other retail marijuana retail facilities I've seen are standalone buildings. This one you're sharing with other tenants, are there different requirements for that, or?
No, there's nothing in the state rules that restricts that or regulates it in any different way. There are other locations, I believe, in Massachusetts that are in multi-tenant locations. And certainly, we operate other stores that are in multi-tenant locations as well. So I think the only sort of nuance to it from our standpoint is trying to make sure that the parking lot and sort of access in and out of the site is handled well, given that there are other tenants as well. But we typically do that through wayfinding and trying to direct people through the right signage and wayfinding tools.
Madam Chair, we also have some people raising their hand in the audience.
Does anyone else on the board want to speak before we open this up to others?
I would assume that we are going to get letters from the appropriate town boards on their approval after this. For example, Conservation Commission, the Building Department regarding signage size and lighting restrictions. And I can't think of any other ones, but we would get letters from them before we would make a decision, I would assume.
Well, we have one for the police chief. One of the other things I thought about, and I don't know, is whether or not that really includes what the fire department might need in the way of a turnaround for a truck or a vehicle. It might be well for you to just speak to the fire chief, who is also the head of the ambulance, to make sure they're comfortable with the negotiation around that property if they need to. I don't know that that's gonna be an issue at all, but it is something that we may want to take a look at. Are you making note of what our questions are so far?
Yes, we are.
Is there, I think we should take a look at and walk through bylaw, because there's a couple of other things. Obviously, I think we're gonna end up meeting again, sir. So let's see what the specific bylaw, because this is new to us, okay, just as it was to the other folks. I know you've reached the agreement with the selectmen, which is great. You still have outstanding stuff with the Board of Health, right? Or not? Do they need to approve you when you go in there?
I don't believe so, I don't think there's anything outstanding with the Board of Health, as far as I know.
Okay. Have they been sent a copy of the Title V?
Well, they would have gotten it when the property changed hands.
Garrett, can you-
So we are aware of the agreement that Keith has in place with the Board of Health to upgrade this, update the septic tank, so they're comfortable with the existing system. You know, we've run the flow calculations, you know, based on the record plans, you know, and, you know, there's adequate, you know, size of the system to support the proposed use. You know, I assume they may have gotten a copy of the special permit package as well. I'm not sure if this town distributes it that way, which is, you know, typical to receive a copy of the package. But, you know, we don't believe there's any issues with the system itself, and it was recently inspected and passed Title V inspection.
I would just be more comfortable with a letter directly from the Board of Health saying that they're all set.
Great, we can look into and provide.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's just run through here, I'm just running through the bylaw. It's got the purpose, the applicability, and we have established that all you want is a dispensary. You are not gonna manufacture baked cookies, nothing like that, right?
Correct, it's just a retail license, Madam Chair.
Okay, and what are your hours of operation?
The proposed hours are 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM every day.
And is that Monday through Friday?
No, that's seven days a week.
Okay. And you're obviously not within 500 feet of any of the things that we don't allow you to be, even though there is a child care center up the street. You understand there's no onsite consumption of marijuana, you know, no one will be doing anything but picking it up there, correct?
Yes, correct, and that's something that we're very familiar with from all of our businesses, and it's a key state requirement as well. So we police the site outside of the store very closely to make sure there's no onsite consumption.
All marijuana, how do we monitor odors?
So what we typically do is we will install a new mechanical system in this unit, so new HVAC units into the space to heat and cool the air. In that system, in the ducting, will be carbon filters that are, that's the standard approach to filtering out odors. Candidly, the odors from a retail location are pretty minimal. Odor concerns are much more in the cultivation and processing of cannabis products. But the limited odors that are there, we pick up through the carbon filters in the mechanical system, and there should be no noticeable odors outside of the unit.
Right, but bylaws wants to be sure that your system will, any pesticides, insecticides, or other chemicals, and odor from the marijuana can, should not be able to be detected by a person with normal sense of smell at the exterior of the marijuana establishment. So I guess, what do you do in other entities? Do you test once in a while, or how do you verify that there's no odor? You just wait till this complaint from neighbors, or?
Yeah, unfortunately, it is a very subjective thing, there's no specific particle that you can test for or anything like that. Typically, the way this works in other communities is when we apply for our building permit and our engineering, you know, our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing permits, we'll submit, you know, detailed information on that mechanical system, including the filters, and of course, it needs to be compliant with code and all of that. And then, to your point, on an ongoing basis, there's no, there's no specific test that we can run for an odor particle. It is unfortunately more of a subjective, sort of, ongoing requirement.
Where do you stand with the state right now?
So we've applied, we applied to the state months ago, after we signed our host agreement. We actually, they, when you apply, they issue RFIs, requests for more information. So we actually recently received our, what I would consider our final RFI with one comment in it, which was responded to. So we'll be up, the final approval happens at the Cannabis Commission Board, which is a monthly meeting. So we should obtain that in the next few weeks. And just to note, we do hold other licenses from the CCC, for example, for our Franklin production facility. So we're already licensed by the state, generally.
Okay, but we, one of the things that's required, and we did not come back at you about, is we need that, because you had said in your verbiage that by the time we held the hearing, you should have your final approval. So we need a copy of that.
Yep, I can provide it in advance of the next hearing, if that's okay, Madam Chair, it'll be in our hands by then.
We did see, and we have received, a letter from the police chief, so that covers that. Are you against any additional restrictions that the board may choose to put, for example, at the discretion of the police chief? You could be required to have detail officers.
No, I think we're open to any suggestions from the board. We're very much trying to do this in a collaborative way and to make everybody comfortable that the business will function the way it's intended to. So we're open to any reasonable conditions.
Okay. And you have done your traffic circulation plan, which is fine. For some reason, this bylaw we have, which is, again, new for marijuana, requires that we do site plan before we do special permit, which is kind of interesting. We have to take into consideration the site location, including proximity and so forth, traditional uses of the site and so forth, and the intensity of proposed activities. We don't, the only neighbors you have a commercial, so that does somehow bring down the intensity. Oh, do we have a copy of your leases yet?
We did provide that paperwork to Leanne with our submission.
Well, it wasn't the lease itself, though.
Well, we have this-
It was a letter signed by the owner. And let me just explain to you, yes, it's important to know that you have standing, but we need to see the terms- Uh, yes, it's important to know that you have standing, but we need to see the terms of the um. Agreement, for example, how many years is it? Do you have um the ability for an early buyout if you choose to leave that property? Um, because we can only grant the permit for as long as you have an interest in the property. So let's say you have a twenty-five-year lease, okay? Um, then we could grant the twenty-five-year lease, but we also have to see all the terms in the lease. For example, you could have a provision that after five years at your sole discretion. For the sum of whatever, you could buy out your um uh obligation to the rest of the lease. Does this make sense to you?
No, I I think I understand what you're saying, Madam Chair. I did provide to Leanne. Our binding option to lease agreement, which has all of those terms in it, including the rent, the term of the lease. Uh, there are no buyout provisions or anything, but it it specifies all of the terms as well as. Uh, we provided an amendment to that document, which we signed recently, which extended the duration of.
You sent the actual instrument.
Yes, there isn't a full lease agreement. What there is is a binding option to lease, because this process was going to take some time, and we were uncertain. Of the outcome, it is a binding agreement which specifies all of the terms, but we won't execute the formal lease document. Until if we are actually uh able to proceed and receive our approvals. But that that binding option to lease has all of the key terms that that you're mentioning.
Leanne, did I miss something?
I did forward that to the board. I can send it again tomorrow.
Okay, if you if you would, because I I remember seeing something signed. That was oh maybe a couple of pages long, but um. It didn't say um the length of the um lease or anything. Uh, one of the other provisions that the by law requires us to look at is abandonment or discontinuance of use. And. It allows that, um, you know, if you stop using it, the permit dies within a year. Um, but what, one of the other things is who's going to do the cleanup, okay? So if something happens and you leave that location, or you abandon that location either for another location or just abandoned entirely. Um, is there any cleanup work that you should see that uh we should have to prepare for?
Um, I I don't believe so, Madam Chair. I mean, our our intention is to uh improve, you know, the the, you know. Restrike the parking lot and add some of the landscaping elements that we talked about on the exterior, but I think those are all. Uh additive to the site and improving the site. Um, our interior build out will be a high quality. Uh, retail build out that will be built, you know, pursuant to building permits and and subject to local code and and any requirements, so I I don't think that. Uh, we would be leaving a a mess uh to clean up. If anything, I think we're improving the site and and hopefully. Uh, leaving it in a better condition than than when we came.
No, I'm just thinking in terms of residue or anything, I mean, whatever has to be gotten rid of.
No, I mean, I I think this is a a very similar to any other sort of consumer products retail business, so we will have. Uh, small goods that we sell in a packaged format. Um, there won't be any uh uh. Sort of contamination of the of the building or anything like that. Uh, uh, it it's very similar if we were selling alcohol or some other. Uh, consumer packaged good.
Excellent, okay, so um would you just reiterate to me? What your expectations are, the things that you need to provide to us for the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Problems sometimes, and we get to the next meeting and we're not sure that. Um, the folks understood what we said.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm happy to, Madam Chair, and I'd like to do that, so I know that what what our sort of marching orders are uh in order to try to. Uh, uh, close off any open items. So what I have is a a letter from the board of health. Um, uh, us touching base with the fire department to see if they have any comments on our uh traffic circulation or or any other elements of the site. Uh, I have a uh completion of our uh process with the conservation. Commission, which, as Garrett mentioned, we've already submitted uh the forms and the filing fees there, so hopefully that will be. Uh, that'll be happening imminently. Uh, and then I think the the sort of uh. The maybe the more nebulous uh piece of this is uh the neighboring uh uh, you know, the the access parcel and their. Their uh position, which I will look at that letter uh once Leanne sends it over, and. Uh, and and sort of on a related note, the city of Marlboro and and their position, I think is the other.
Yes, defining your neighbors and taking another look at. Um, the um parking requirements, and then we talked about lighting and signage.
Um, on the signage piece, uh, is it okay if we represent what's currently on the site and and have any? Additional signage subject to approval later, because I don't know that we will be able to. Work out defined details of signage with our uh i- in terms of signage on that easement, so if we commit to. Uh, using existing signage and showing what that is and not adding any without your approval, is that? Is that potentially a path that we?
My concern is we haven't approved any signage that's there, and we don't have an inventory of what is there. So I think if, you know, to to us signage is anything that's on the building or anything that's on an independent sign. This would not, by the way, uh, might be a a consideration for safety, but. The sign that you're going to have um at the corner of Donald Lynch in Bana Road. Um, is not in Berlin, okay? The only interest we would have in that. Um, would be, you know, can people find the place um as opposed to. Riding up and down forty-five gazillion times trying to find the entrance. Um. But I do think um mentioning uh on the plan, whether it's hot top or. Or uh porous material, because they they're treated differently by the conservation commission, I'm sure, and by us. And again, we need to calculate, and I'm sure your traffic engineer can do that. The number of parking spaces that are required, and it has to do with the nature of the business in our by law. Uh, not necessarily how many employees there are. Um, it often has to do with um. The square footage as opposed to the number of people that work there. And again, the signage and lighting, because this um. Building has not come before us before for any signage or lighting. We need you to show us what's on there, and we need you to show us what is existing, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah.
And any that you are going to be adding, because, you know, we, you have a limitation on the amount of lighting. And the amount of signage, so it's up to us to take a look at that. And again, you have no, what I would call um reasonable issues. Um, with things such as uh making um. You know, the police chief in charge of requiring details or anything else that might come up with the board members, correct?
Yeah, but I I don't think we would, Madam Chair.
Okay. So it would be my suggestion um that um. I'm going to talk to our council, and um I'd like by uh the next meeting, if we could, if the board chooses to continue this hearing. That we would be in a position to know what the situation is with your easement. Okay, so that might best be served by you um speaking or your counsel speaking with our counsel. Um, because we do have both Marlboro and individually the DC credit union. Um, in objection to y- your facility. Pat, I'm sorry, did I see, were you waving a hand? Did you have a question?
Uh, Pat, you're muted. Sorry, I muted you.
Does anyone else on the board have a question? Does anyone in the audience have a question?
Yeah, there's a Brian Falk that has had his hand raised. He's been very patient.
Okay, Leanne, could you?
We can let you, Brian, you can speak now.
Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great, and you can put my video on. I I I put on a jacket tonight, so I might as well just play myself. Um, and again, Brian Falk with Myrick O'Connell, one hundred Front Street in Worcester, here representing DCU. Um, the letter uh that was referenced earlier tonight, I did submit on DCU's behalf. Um, DCU is. Just over the line in Marlboro along Donald Lynch Boulevard.
Brian, you're dying on us here. Okay, there.
Hi me? There you are. All right, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So as mentioning, DCU is in a butter to the site with buildings just over the line along Donald Lynch Boulevard. DCU is not an organization that is looking to oppose business development. But DCU does have significant concerns with this particular use at this site. Um, as I was alluded to earlier, is our position that um the easement that's being used to access this site. Um, is not allowed for this use under the Marlboro zoning. Um, the easement is not a public way. It is located on DCU's property. And the owner of the site does have deed access rights to use the easement. However, it's well settled in Massachusetts case law. That an access way for use has to be located in a zoning district where that use is also allowed. When the access way is located in a different zoning district than the main development site. It has to be allowed in both zoning districts, and and that's not the case here. The easement area is located in a zoning district in Marlboro that where retail marijuana establishments are not allowed. They're prohibited. The the case law is very clear in this situation, as I mentioned in the letter I submitted to the board. If the access way can't be used, um, it would be a zoning violation to use this access way to access this particular site. Um, in short, the city of Marlboro could seek zoning enforcement to block the use of the easement for this proposed use. I haven't seen the letter that you mentioned that the city of Marlboro submitted, but um it it sounds as though it it agrees with DCU on this point. So as a result, the applicant does not appear to have a legal means of access to the site. Um, and I don't believe you can approve a use that doesn't have legal access. Um, beyond this fundamental problem, DCU does have concerns that this is a bad location for a retail marijuana facility. The site's at the end of a dead end thirteen-hundred-foot-long driveway. That's the home to several non-retail uses, like as you described earlier. The site cannot be seen from the closest public way, which is Donald Lynch Boulevard in Marlboro. It's shielded from neighboring properties, and looking at the site, it looks like a security risk. I'm not suggesting that the proposed use isn't legal and legitimate, but these facilities are often targets. Given the um type of material they have on site and the and the likelihood of cash transactions. This doesn't look like a good site to put a potential target. Um, given the competing jurisdictions, it's not clear if it's the Berlin PD or the Marlboro PD. That would be responding to calls or patrolling after hours. Um, you mentioned the signs. It's not clear to me how anyone's going to find this site off off premises signs in Marlboro. Under their sign ordinance are are very strictly regulated. Um, I don't know, easement rights aside, I don't know that the zoning in Marlboro would permit. An off-premises sign at the corner of of Vanna Road and and um Donald Lynch Boulevard. Um, as mentioned, the driveway goes right along DCU's parking areas and walkways um as used by its employees. It's a straightaway, and traffic does move very quickly uh on that road, and now we'll be increasing the number of cars that are using it. Um, so again, given the security risks in this poor location, I I would suggest that the board. Would consider denying this application under its own special um criteria. But the fundamental question um from our perspective is this one of zoning. Where the access to the use isn't allowed is is prohibited um in the city of Marlboro. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so um. Mr. Runk, I think that between now and if the board chooses to continue the hearings next month. Some work needs to be done.
Absolutely.
And I think um. We can go on. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Falk. Uh, unfortunately, we just got your letter. Um, today, so um. The members of the board haven't really had a chance to digest what you've put in here. But it was, and we've already offered Mr. Runk a copy of it, so that he can see what your objections are. Is there anything that you need from us, Mr. Falk?
Uh, no, uh, just notice of the the next continuance of this hearing.
Okay, I mean, in terms of plans or anything else?
Uh, no, we have the the application materials and the plans that were submitted.
Excellent, okay. All right, so we'll go back again, if we may, Mr. Runk, about um, we talked about the board of health, the fire department. Um, the conservation commission. Perhaps you would have at least, if nothing else, a status on the conservation commission. Um, again, you know, I know this is very close to wetlands from what I saw on the map. And whether or not it's currently hot-topped. Doesn't mean that they might not have a concern with it, because it wasn't um part of a pre- previous site plan. Um. Defining your neighbors in the building. Um, and if you could do that in writing, it would be helpful to us. And by defining the neighbors, if you could have your traffic. Um, folks, just take a look at it, take a look at the by law, what's required for different places for parking. And make sure that the by law is covered, because again, it's it, you know, it's not necessarily. Um, the number of employees, which I think is what you've worked off of. It can be the square footage. Um. The lighting and the signage. Okay, and again, I'm going to take a look, but I did get a document about your um. Agree or what was in it, what I'm assuming is instead of. A lease agreement, because you don't have a lease agreement. Um, it would be better for us for you to define what your anticipation is, because we need years.
Yeah, uh, Madam Chair, I think that when you see the document that Leanne will send around, you'll see that those exact details are specified in there.
Is it a document that's signed by both you and the owner?
Yes, it is.
Excuse me, so for all intents and purposes, it is a lease?
That's correct. It's a binding document. There's consideration that's flowed. Uh, all of the material terms of the. Lease agreement are specified in there, so uh I I believe it should, it should cover all of the bases that that uh you're talking about, but. Uh, please let us know if there's any issue with it.
I have the assignment and assumption of lease option in front of me, Lynn, and it does not have that information in it.
Uh, Leanne, did you send the actual option agreement? Because I think there were three, there are multiple PDFs that I sent you with the.
Yeah, I I forwarded the whole email, which I'll do again tomorrow, so I forwarded the email with the attachments.
Right, you know what? Because I think Pat and I are talking about the same thing.
Yeah.
What I got, you know, was general, and it was signed by the property owner. But it was, it didn't outline the things we need to know. So unless there's a separate document.
I don't know, I get the hard package.
The one I have was dated December fourth. And it was signed by both parties. And it's attached with Vanna Road.
An email was sent on January fourth, uh, which included um the lease agreement. And I forwarded it to the board, which I'll I'll do again now.
Thank you, Leanne. Thank you, Leanne. I apologize to put you to the extra work.
No, big deal.
The near term on this one is a 10 years on the lease commencement.
Does that sound right to you, Mr. Rungta?
Yes, Madam Chair, it's a, it's a 10-year base term with two 5-year options to extend for the tenant. So it could be about, it would be 20 years of term if those options are exercised.
Well, no, we, I think we would consider it 10, because you'd have to exercise the option before it would be more. But we can talk about that.
Sure.
Okay, does anyone on the board have anything else? Does anybody in the audience have anything that they'd like to mention to us, or ask, a question they'd like to ask? Because I see we have quite a few more people on with us than are coming forward. Okay, if not, I'll ask the board what they think.
I think there's a lot of work that's going to come forward to us before we can make any sort of a decision.
Do you all feel-
I agree with Danny. There's a lot of unanswered questions and issues.
Okay.
Biggest issue would be with DCU.
Well, not so much with them as with the issue they're raising.
Yes, the City of Marlborough.
I think that for that, we will need to rely on our counsel, how she perceives what Mr. Falk is bringing forward.
Right.
Do we all pretty much agree on that?
Yep.
Okay, anything else? If not, I'd entertain a motion to continue this hearing.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to continue this hearing to February 10th at 6:30 PM.
6:30?
7:30, is it?
7:30.
Yeah. Isn't our first one at?
Our first one is at 6:00. Our second one is at 7:00, and this would be 7:30.
Okay, so 7:00, I'll amend that to 7:30.
Thank you.
I will second that.
Thank you, Jenny.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll take a roll call vote. I'm an A, I'm a yay. Dennis?
Yay.
Pat?
Yay.
Jim?
Yay.
Keith?
Yay.
Jenny?
Yay.
Did I get everybody? Okay, so that's a vote. Oh, Pat, I'm sorry.
Hey, Susanna.
Susanna.
Oh, I'm sorry. Susanna. Okay. So we'll continue to until 7:30 on February 10th.